Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, March 5th, 2024 Tom Water City Council Meeting. So we will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Leona Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
She's muted on right.
I am present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Authausser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
I saw him a minute ago online. He might, he might have dropped off. Oh, no, he's there. I just don't see his camera on. So he is, he's, is in the audience, so.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I'm present. Joined, Councilmember Dahlhoff will lead us in our pledge. All right, the next item is proclamation for Women's History Month. And I believe that Councilmember Swarthout will go ahead and read that.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the city of Tom Water strives to promote a strong and inclusive community that recognizes and celebrates efforts to bring people together for a greater good and highlight the many threads in our community, or excuse me, many threads in our fabric that make it strong and whole. And whereas International Women's Day is celebrated globally on March 8th by those who believe in gender equality and who seek to improve the lives of all women through cultural, legal, economic, and social change. And whereas in 1987 and each year since, Congress has passed a resolution recognizing March as National Women's History Month. Women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation and have served our country precariously in the military. And whereas women are critical to the economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Women have served leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist, emancipation, industrial labor, civil rights, and peace movements, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas the National Women's History Alliance designates a yearly theme for the Women's History Month, the 2024 theme is women who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion, and recognizes women throughout the country who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination entirely from our lives and institutions. And therefore Debbie Sullivan, the first woman mayor of the city of Tom Water, does hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 National Women's History Month and urges people to take actions against gender bias and inequity and join in recognizing women's contributions to culture, history, and society.
Great, thank you. I believe we were going to have a member of the League of Women Voters come this evening to accept this, so I do not see anyone with that group, so I will make sure that they get this. Thank you very much.
Debbie Sullivan, Mayor, can I? Amen.
Yes, Councilmember Cathy.
Yes, I just wanted to say that all of the strides that we as women have made, and much of it with the help of, of the men who also believe in equity and inclusion and all of those such things, and honor women and our, in relationships with women. See, many things have changed, but the thing that has not changed is pay equity. Women are still making the average between 82 and 87 cents on each dollar. So that, that impacts women all throughout their, their life after they have worked because they have not contributed the same or closer to the same amounts into retirement as men. And that's why in the wonderful, I guess, comment or letter that Councilmember Jefferson sent to the legislature and said that there were a lot of senior women on the streets and are part of our homeless population. I just want to say that all of this is related to, to women's financial parity with men. So that was, I just wanted to make that comment. I remember when it was much, much wider gap and I've marched for it many times, but we're, I don't know why it's taking so long, but we're headed in the right direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. All right, next item is public comment. Do we have anyone registered online?
We do not.
And we do not have anyone in council chambers signed up. We will move then to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
It's moved.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. With that, we have approved the minutes from the council February 20, February 20th, 2024 meeting, approval of the minutes of the council's strategic priorities discussion on February 24th, payment vouchers, resolution R 2024-006, surplus property, the inter-local agreement with Thurston County Cities of Lacey and Olympia for the 2024 Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaboration Regional Initiative, great, the grant agreement with the Washington Department of Commerce for the City Hall Solar Plus Storage Feasibility and Design Project, grant agreement with Washington Department of Commerce for the Tom Water Library Solar Plus Storage Feasibility and Design Project, and the Forestland Response Agreement Amendment Number One with the Department of Natural Resources. And with this one, we have which committee those consent agenda items came from. So if anybody wants more information, go to those particular meetings and you can get more of the discussion. All right, with that, we have a public hearing with, for resolution number R 2024-003, amending the 2024 through 2029 six-year transportation improvement program. And Mary Heather will start, will do the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As Mayor Sullivan said, my name is Mary Heather Ames and I am Assistant Transportation and Engineering Director. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide information before you hold the public hearing. I will be talking about amending the 2024 to 2029 six-year transportation improvement program. This presentation may feel familiar to you since we did a similar process last year, as well as this being a regular topic for the council. And could I have the presentation? Right, and next slide. So first, let's review the TIP process, the Transportation Improvement Program process. Normally, this is a yearly event and you will be seeing me again in a couple months for that yearly update. The Transportation Improvement Program process is the foundation of transportation funding within the state of Washington. This happens every year when each city or jurisdiction prepares a list of transportation projects for the next six years, which becomes the local TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program. These lists are then submitted through, through our local planning organizations, which ours is TRPC, Thurston Regional Planning Council, to the state. And then the state bundles them all together to become the statewide Transportation Improvement Program, or STIP. And I will likely refer to this process generally as the TIP/STIP process because it's much shorter to say. This evening, we're talking about amending the current TIP, which was approved by council in June of 2023, and it covers now 24 through 2029. If council approves this amendment following the public hearing, I will then submit the information to TRPC and subsequently the state. Next slide, please. The, this proposed amendment is needed to add a project to the current TIP, which in turn allows us to accept potential funding for this project. And the project is Somerset Hill Fish Passage Barrier Removal. Staff has submitted a, an application for $4 million in protect funding, and I'll spell out what that stands for later. You can read it on the slide there. As I mentioned, this process may feel familiar to you as we did this last year for the Percival Creek Fish Passage Barrier Removal Project on SAP Road, which uses the same funding source. Next slide, please. Similar to the previous project, this project also sits within Upper Percival Creek. Percival Creek has high salmonid potential but low existing conditions. The whole creek has fish passage barriers, high stream temperatures, lack of large woody debris, and lack of habitat. This project addresses those factors in a location at Somerset Hill Drive here in Tom Water. Next slide, please. The project site is shown here with the star shape. North is up in this map and you can see 101 to the north and I-5 to the east. Somerset Hill Drive specifically goes between RW Johnson to the west and Crosby to the east. Next slide. Currently, the stream passes through a corrugated metal culvert, which is five feet in diameter and 103 feet long. This creates a barrier due to velocity. As a result of the bank full width survey performed in January 2023, we now, we know that we need a 24-foot wide crossing, which is over four times the current culvert width. The preferred, oh, next slide, sorry. The preferred solution is a bridge. So in June of 2023, a consultant evaluated three crossing types and determined that a 60 to 100-foot prefabricated bridge is the way to go. Once funding is secured, design will begin promptly and will dial in the specific size of the bridge. Construction is planned for 2028. There is definitely a fish window involved with this construction. Next slide, please. This is a $4 million project, and if the current funding application is successful, it will be completely covered by PROTECT Grant, which PROTECT stands for Promoting Resilient Operations for Transformative, Efficient, and Cost-Saving Transportation. And next slide. Finally, I have shown the table from your packet, which details the amendment adding the project. This concludes my presentation, and with that, I ask that you consider moving to approve and authorize the mayor to sign resolution R 2024-003, which amends the city's six-year transportation improvement program for 2024 through 2029, following your public hearing.
Great. Any questions before we start the public hearing? Councilmember Cathy.
I just wanted to ask Mary Heather, if, when you go with the bridge option there, I know that that creates more disruption, does it not? Where they have to anchor the bridge on either side? How, how is that handled, other than hopefully with care?
It, it's handled by the design of the bridge being a, a much wider span. So we're looking at least 60 feet up to 100, which we'll figure out during design, but that's fully outside of the bank full width, which we talked about, the 24-foot needed. So as long as we're outside of that, we'll, we'll be avoiding that disruption. Does that answer your question?
Of the, of the bank area, you mean?
Right, so bank full width is something that I learned that is not, you don't cover that in engineering, like transportation engineering. So that's talking about the width that a stream needs to be able to meander and, and flood when there's higher flows. So this stream needs the 24 feet. So if we stay outside of that, then we're giving the, the stream, which is narrower most of the time, but giving it the, the room to be the living organism that it is. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yeah. And then, and then when you have to go out that far, I know that then you'll be past the banks and where the meandering is. Is there extra care taken in building that out there? When, I mean, out like that, when they are still in, you know, forest areas? And do as little, make as possible to put, make that steady?
Yes, absolutely. That's, I mentioned there being a, a fish window, so we definitely are not doing things when there are organisms present that we could disrupt. So that gives us a limited amount of time. And in this case, what we're doing is removing fill that previous humans had put in to put the road in. So it'll be more of a removal process than moving around anything, more just taking that out and then putting the bridge outside of that width.
Very good, very good. You're doing a great job. You know, anytime I've asked a question, you've already been watching out for it. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mary Heather.
Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary, I just want to clarify a question. You said prefabricated. Does that mean it's like built off-site and then just dropped in?
Well, we won't drop.
I mean, like drop it. Poor word choice. Replace.
Yeah, generally, you can find some fun videos online, of course, if you're a nerd and want to watch engineering videos, but it's, it's more of a sliding into, into place that's pretty slow and kind of ooching and scooching it into place.
One additional question. Where does that, projects like this come about? And we have the green team with Tom Water, and you're looking at environmentally preferred purchasing. How does that play into like a prefabricated bridge?
So in this case, not only do we have those requirements, but the grant funding comes with its own requirements. So there are things like Buy America requirements, other ways that you can and cannot spend the money. So I think not only do we follow those local standards, but also state and federal standards.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Has anyone signed up for public hearing? In there?
Not online.
Okay, so is anyone in the audience who is not signed up wish to speak at the public hearing? I do not see any take, so I'm going to close the public comment portion of our public hearing. And council members, do you have any additional questions? Or councilmember Swarthout?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to compliment Mary Heather. You know, we've found, we had talked about this project, you know, and a year ago, and it's just amazing how quickly this has come to fruition. It really is because it's such a narrow channel and it's really tearing the soil away from, from the banks there. And so I just wanted to compliment you on that, that we're able to address this as quickly as we are and have it paid for. So that's, that's really remarkable. So with that, I would like to recommend that we adopt resolution number R 2024-003, amending the 2024-2029 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Cathy. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. All right, now we are off to council considerations. This one is resolution number R 2024-001, Hazard Mitigation Plan for the Thurston Regional Fourth Edition. Erica Smith, yeah, Erica Smith Erickson and Brad Mudrude will be presenting. And I see Erica is up at the podium.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Erica Smith Erickson. I am the Housing and Land Use Planner for the city of Tom Water. Tonight, I would like to present the Hazard Mitigation Plan for the Thurston Region Fourth Edition. Yeah, we're good. Thank you. The Hazard Mitigation Plan for the region and the city of Tom Water outlines strategies to reduce the risks of natural hazards such as floods, earthquakes, and wildfires that threaten the area. The plan's goals, policies, and actions will minimize losses and protect the people and community assets from future disasters. Next slide, please. The hazard mitigation, oops, sorry. To manage risk, contain costs, and promote sustainable communities, the federal government enacted the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Local governments must adopt a federally approved hazard mitigation plan to apply for and receive federal hazard mitigation assistance funding. The plan's mitigation strategy includes regional actions, also known as the core plan or the regional plan, to improve multi-agency coordination, build mitigation capabilities, and strengthen the resiliency across Thurston County. In addition, each plan participant produces an annex that prioritizes actions to minimize losses within their jurisdiction. The city annex identifies potential city-specific projects that are designed to mitigate the impacts of those hazards that could be undertaken in the future, depending on funding, direction, and need. FEMA requires that the plan be updated every five years. Next slide, please. Central to the city annex is its recommended projects, programs, and activities the planning partners within the city will implement to reduce damage and losses from the impacts of hazards that are identified in the plan. These are known as its initiatives. The core plan contains 12 regional mitigation initiatives, and the city has identified 20 initiatives. There are multiple types of initiatives, such as public outreach, development regulations, hazard damage reduction, and critical facilities and replacement retrofit. Next slide, please. The city annex must contain at least one initiative for each mapped hazard. Again, the city of Tom Water is mapped with wildfire, flood, earthquake, severe weather, landslide hazards. We did include one for Lahar. Next slide, please. This is a mitigation initiative format. It includes the hazard that is being addressed, the background and need for this specific initiative, the lead department, the cost and time, the funding source, and where or how the initiative was identified, as well as a status. If it was newly added, if it was existing or ongoing, or if it was modified from the last plan. Next slide, please. So how did staff choose the initiatives? Staff used initiatives from the last update and some of the, some of these example plans to choose the initiatives. The lead planning team met with all the departments to go through work plans, such as our CFP, the 2020 Water System Plan, individual department work plans and schedules, the comprehensive plan, and more to incorporate work plans into hazard mitigation planning to create the initiatives. Next slide, please. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is broken down into 12 sections. I'm going to go over a few important sections of the plan. I'm not going to go through all 12. But the city annex development process is a breakdown of the hazard mitigation planning team, the work groups, meetings, stakeholders, public outreach, our work cited, and more. This section includes the plan monitoring and maintenance and continued public outreach strategies. The risk assessment is an evaluation of each jurisdiction's hazards. Each risk assessment identifies the area of impact, the extent, previous incidents, the probability of occurrence, changes with development, effects of climate change, vulnerability, and more. Again, each jurisdiction must have at least one initiative for each hazard. That leads us into mitigation strategy. In this section, you will find an, an introduction to the city mitigation initiatives, our prioritization process, the initiative format, and the proposed initiatives. The community capability assessment is a jurisdiction's unique set of capabilities and tools leveraged to support hazard mitigation, such as our capital's facilities plans, our comprehensive plan, the building and land use codes, its specific plans and actions that support hazard mitigation. This was a new FEMA requirement adopted this year. This is essentially a show your work and sources section for our mitigation initiatives. This is how we will document where in work plans the city of Tom Water supports hazard mitigation initiatives. Next slide, please. Along with showing our work, we are going to monitor and maintain the plan. The city annex has incorporated many city updates into the initiatives. Staff will frequently review and track the status of our initiatives through the capital facilities plan update, our tree and vegetation code update, the 2025 development code periodic update, our Washington Wildland Urban Interface Code adoption, and the 2025 comprehensive plan update. The city annex and regional plan is a climate resiliency sub-element for the 2025 comprehensive plan update. Next slide, please. The hazard mitigation planning work groups started meeting in February of 2022. For almost two years, the work groups' meetings were facilitated by the Thurston Regional Planning Council. They were the lead on creating the regional plan. The, for, sorry, pardon. Within the work groups, we worked together to go over risk assessments, talked about federal update requirements. We initially, we went over the initiative prioritization, benefit cost reviews, and hazard data. The city annex was submitted with the core plan on November 27th, 2023, to the Washington Emergency Management Division. Next slide, please. After the plan was submitted to the state for review, FEMA notified planning partners one minor revision was required. Each plan must reference and adopt the regional mitigation initiatives. Those were those 12 initiatives from the core plan. On February 8th, 2024, FEMA notified Thurston Regional Planning Council that they will be issuing an approved pending adoption letter. Next slide, please. I would like to, I would like to ask the council to adopt resolution number 2024-001, Hazard Mitigation Plan for the Thurston Region Fourth Edition.
Any questions? Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you. I really appreciate your presentation again. Can you, I just had a question about, what's the makeup of the planning team? As far as, are they all?
Yeah, um, let me bring that up. I do have it saved here. Forgive me, there was many work groups and planning teams, so the plan does identify it in the very beginning.
Well, you mentioned TRPC, so I was wondering if it included other outside? Or was it specifically Tom Water people?
Oh, yeah, so the planning work group, along with TRPC, also included other jurisdictions, other cities. Also, there was Evergreen State College. I think we had fire districts as well, Thurston Regional Fire Authority. We also worked with the Washington Emergency Management Division. We did have a public outreach. We did a booth at the Thurston County Fair last summer in July. We spent a lot of time with them. I want to make sure I'm not leaving anyone out. Yeah, there was also school districts as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Quite a group. Quite a group, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, um, do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number R two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero one Hazard, Hazards Mitigation Plan for the Thurston Region, Fourth Edition.
And I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Sorthout and seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
All right. So the next item we have is agreement with the Department of Ecology for an integrated plan. Um, Grant and Austin and Maris will be presenting. Welcome, Austin.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, I'm gonna have one staff presentation since the items are related, but we have two separate, uh, recommended actions, so one for each agreement. And so just wanted to, to clarify that upfront as we're going through the presentation. We'll, we'll talk about both my items, uh, but still need to have separate action. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Okay.
Yes, we see it.
Perfect. Uh, and just before we start, I'd like to thank our, our two, uh, grant agencies that we're gonna be talking about tonight, the, the EPA and then also the Department of Ecology. And then I also put in, uh, a little, just thank you for the Center for Creative Land Recycling. They're the EPA's technical, technical assistance provider, and they've been a, a great support system for us as we've started our, our EPA grant journey. This slide I carried over from the, uh, last update provided in November at a work session. Um, this is just a reminder of really what the two grants are intended for. Um, they're gonna provide funding to inventory, characterize assess, and conduct a range of planning activities, uh, help us develop some cleanup plans, and then also conduct community engagement within our two target areas, which are the brewery district and the Capitol Boulevard corridor. So we have a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the EPA, and then a two hundred thousand dollar grant from, uh, the Department of Ecology. And we'll talk about some of the key differences on the next slides here. The first is the timeline of each grant. So the EPA grant is, uh, typically a multi-year grant. This one is through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-seven. Um, I fully anticipate the money will be expended much quicker than that, but that's how much time the EPA, uh, gives us to, to spend down that grant. And then the ecology grant, which is a site-specific grant that we're targeting, uh, particularly on the Washout site, former Washout headquarters there on, on Trosper and Capitol. That's got a much shorter window of opportunity, and so, um, we need to spend those grant dollars down by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Another key difference is the, the budget breakdown for each grant. Uh, so the first there at top, uh, is the ecology grant. Um, the, you know, close to sixty percent of that grant will go towards environmental work. Um, we have twenty thousand going towards cleanup feasibility, uh, almost sixty thousand they're going towards, uh, planning activities for reuse of the site. And then, uh, a really small portion for grant project and administration. And then for the EPA grant, um, these are really intended to mostly support environmental work. And so you'll see, that's why four hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that grant is for environmental work. Um, we've got twelve thousand dollars for community engagement, uh, about fifty thousand dollars for planning activities, and then a little bit more at nine thousand for grant project and administration. The majority of this funding will fund a consultant, uh, an environmental consultant. Um, the, the remainder of the funding will really most likely fund staff time, particularly around grant management and things like that. Um, but the, the bulk of funding from both grants will go towards consultant team. And when we last came to council in, in November, we were just about to post, uh, an RFQ. Um, we, our internal selection committee has since reviewed responses to that RFQ, and we've preliminarily selected a consultant. Uh, and so that will be coming to council here in the near future to finalize, uh, a service provider agreement and scope of work with them. Then, like I said, that's one of our main next steps. Um, we're working with, with the consultant team to put together a scope of work. We're really excited about the team we've selected. And so more to come on that, um, to both general government and council. And then we've, uh, begun coordinating steps towards grant implementation, but really, the more robust implementation will start here in spring as we bring on that consultant and, uh, hit the ground with, with both grants. And so, as I mentioned, um, two separate recommended actions. One is for the Ecology Integrated Planning Grant, and then the other is for the, uh, EPA Community Wide Assessment Grant. But happy to, to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve an author as the mayor to sign the grant agreement with the Department of Ecology for a two hundred thousand dollar integrated planning grant.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? All right, the motion carries.
Can you bring the other, your backup again?
What was that?
Oh, I just wonder if she could bring the other.
Uh, Austin, it has a.
The other.
Do you want me to, yeah, let me pull that up.
Okay.
And I'll.
All right, Councilmember Von Holtz.
I move to adopt resolution number R two zero two four dash zero zero five, approving the terms and conditions of an Environmental Protection Agency Cooperative Agreement and accepting a five hundred thousand dollar round-filled community-wide assessment grant.
Second.
This has been moved by Councilmember Von Holtz, seconded by Councilmember Dahlhoff. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
This'll, this'll start some amazing work that we have in the pipeline, so. All right, with that, we will move to committee reports. And, uh, first committee is Public Health and Safety, Councilmember Agabi.
I don't have any, um, report to give. We are meeting on the twelfth of, uh, this month, and that will be Tuesday next week.
Okay. Uh, General Government Committee, Councilmember Althouser.
Um, thanks, Mayor. Uh, similarly, the General Government Committee hasn't met since our last meeting, but we are meeting a week from tomorrow, which will be March thirteenth, so we will see everyone there at eight AM.
Great. Uh, Public Works Committee, Councilmembers Sorthout.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Public Works Committee will be meeting this Thursday at eight AM, and on our agenda is the Barnes Lake Management District, two thousand twenty-four Budget and Work Plan Review.
Thank you. Uh, Budget Finance, uh, has, a committee has a meeting scheduled in, uh, uh, in April, and I already seen one adjustment to the time, so at our next meeting, when it's, uh, when we are sure, I can, uh, go ahead and confirm when that date is in April. So now we will move to the Mayor-City Administrator Report and Administrator, uh, Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. So I have a few updates for you this evening. First, um, just as a heads up, April ninth, um, Tuesday, April ninth, is being planned right now as a joint City Council Planning Commission Housing Tour. So as a component of the Comprehensive Plan Update, community development staff are working on putting together a tour of various housing projects in Tomwater, uh, and, um, that is currently being planned for that work session evening. So please, um, plan ahead to be in person, and we will, um, uh, uh, bring you more details as we have them developed over the next few weeks. Um, secondarily, I'd like to report that the Washington Surveying and Rating Bureau has, uh, rated the city of Tomwater uh, from a class four to a class three. So this community protection class program from the Washington's, uh, Washington Survey and Rating Bureau is a way in which insurance companies rate communities to better understand and assess and price their fire protection insurance, um, programs. Uh, the reva, the rating is reviewed every five years and includes evaluation of our water system, our fire department operations, fire safety control, as well as the dispatch center. The improvement in our rating, uh, is generally attributed to investments that have been, been made over the past several years in staffing and equipment, as well as fire safety control programs, including fires, uh, inspections and public education programs. So the ev, the evaluation also helps identify areas, uh, we can improve on, which will be addressed through the fire department strategic planning process. So that's great news and for us, as well as the people in our, uh, residents of our community who are paying for fire insurance. Uh, just a, another heads up, uh, building permit, permit activity is, um, experiencing a significant upti, uptick in application submittals. Uh, the state of Washington has adopted an updated energy code that will be going into effect as of March fifteenth. Um, the updates add complexity as well as cost to building construction, which is causing people to want to become vested, um, under the current, uh, energy codes. Um, this isn't uncommon when energy codes are updated, um, but just a heads up, if you hear complaints, which are possible, um, our online cloud-based permit system is experiencing a bit of an overload, and our permit timelines are going to begin to increase, uh, the period of time from when a permit is applied for and when it's issued. Uh, for example, right now, a single-family building permit application takes approximately four weeks, uh, to issue, um, and it is entirely likely that that timeline will be extended and be a little bit longer over the next several months. And I just learned this evening some really great news. Uh, Kelsey Holtz, um, our lobbyist, let us know that our two million dollar budget request to help purchase habitat, excuse me, habitat mitigation land was included in the final compromise budget for the state legislature. Um, it sounds like it still needs to pass. Uh, the budget bill still needs to pass, but the good news is that, um, it's looking like that is going to be become a reality for us, which is a huge, a huge win. Um, and a special shout out to Austin, if he's still on, hopefully. Uh, and Kelsey, as well as our, uh, Thurston Shared Legislative Agenda Partners, who all, um, provided a lot of, uh, really successful and significant advocacy for this project over time. So that's my news for tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, that's, that's really great news. So, uh, for my report, thank you very much. For my report, uh, on February twenty-first and February twenty-second was the, uh, Association of Washington Cities Mayors Forum. So there was approximately fifty mayors from all over the state. So on the twenty-first, that Wednesday night, uh, we had a tour of the brewery district, and so we got to, uh, and I want to again thank Austin for helping with that, uh, showing, uh, showcasing our beautiful new developed brewery district to a lot of other cities. And I saw a lot of cities with this great idea how you do public and private partnerships. So I think it brought, um, a lot of ideas to a lot of other, uh, cities and communities, which was really good. And, um, uh, the mayor's conference is very successful. It was in Olympia, so, uh, mayors of Lacey, Olympia, and Tomwater were the host mayors, uh, for this particular one. So it was, um, really good to interface with other mayors of this, of the state. Uh, also, uh, I appreciate everyone attending, uh, the, our council retreat, uh, last Saturday, or on the twenty-fourth. Uh, I think it was very successful, and I really do appreciate it. Uh, on the twenty-eighth, uh, we, I attended, as well as, uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff and our fire chief, the Emergency Management Executive Meeting, uh, meeting, they ha, hold that twice a year. Uh, it's a very informative meeting, and I, I really appreciate all of the work, and I keep nagging them that they need to uh, dig up the, uh, work that we did in two thousand and nineteen for the, with all the lo, local, inter, inter-local agreements. On that same day, I also got to have a signing ceremony for the Teamsters contract. And I want to give a shout out to Michelle, um, our HR Director and her staff. Uh, she's been doing amazing work with, uh, working with our unions to get these contracts done in an amazing amount of time. I really appreciate staff's time in this. Uh, so I, on, uh, the twenty-first of February, I also had an intercity transit authority meeting, which I did not attend because I was doing the mayor's forum, so, uh, I certainly have notes for that, but I really can't speak well to that one. And, uh, we'll have an intercity transit authority board meeting tomorrow night. I also wanted to make mention that, um, there is a, uh, intercity transit has a Bus Buddy program. If no one is familiar with that, that is, uh, volunteers who help people who have never dealt with riding public transportation before. They work with them until people are comfortable doing that, and they volunteer their time. On, um, Saturday, March sixteenth, they're having a Bus Buddy Program Recognition Event at the Olympia Transit Center from, uh, one to two, uh, net, on Saturday, March sixteenth. So if anybody's interested in the Bus Buddy program, or you would like to learn how to be a volunteer, um, please, um, go ahead and go down to the Olympia Transit Center on that day, and that's my report.
Debbie, could I ask a question about the mayor's forum?
Yes, Councilmember Kathy.
Wondering with all those mayors there, was there any, anything in common that you heard or, um, talked about that are both, uh, headaches and harasses that the cities are, are dealing with?
Uh, actually, we have eight takeaways from the meeting. So what, yeah, so one of them is, uh, that, um, what, that a one-size-fits-all doesn't always work, uh, you know, especially when you have, uh, the east side of the state and the west side of the state. Um, and even, uh, you know, more rural areas and more urban areas, there's a lot of different things that, um, are very, very different. So it's hard to have this one-size-fits-all. Um, they also, uh, just one of the others, this, keeping track of the impacts and the costs on, uh, legislation and state decisions, that was another item that we had a lot of discussion on of how some of those decisions impact cities, and it's not always apparent until we have to deal with it. So those were probably one of the two major ones, and I would also say that it is good to find out how we all have similar issues, you know, struggles. It's, it's not an easy job. And, uh, so, yeah, so it's just kind of good to have other people that you can network with to, to discuss things when things come up, so.
Since this is, uh, Women's Month, uh, what percentage of, uh, mayors across our Washington land are women?
Well, I would say the, the number of women in that room was probably a third or more of women mayors. So, yeah, there's quite a few. Run into a number of them.
Bet if you got out some old pictures, it wouldn't look the same.
No, probably not.
Thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, with that, I'm going to go to council reports, and I'm gonna start, uh, in Zoom land. Uh, so Councilmember Jefferson.
Um, thank you, Mayor. On the twenty-first of February, I attended the EMS, uh, committee meeting, and we talked about a shortfall of paramedics in the county. And this is nationwide. Since the pandemic, this is occurring, and there's a strain on the workforce. Um, the teams are stretched and lots of overtime. So bottom line, we need to stand up an eighth medic unit because you know our community is growing. However, we might not meet the timeline because of those lack of paramedics. So it's going to be expensive for the plan. So it's going to be expensive for the plan ahead. So let me read some information for you quickly. It says that they're offering to pay for travel expenses for qualifying out-of-state candidates to come to the next EMS testing event on April 10th and 11th. Thurston County's website said that individuals who send their applications before Thursday, March 21st, 5:00 PM, will have travel expenses for the 10th and 11th April test. They're going to have their round trip ticket flight paid for, three-night hotel stay, based on the current per diem rate. They're going to have a rental car paid for and meals based on the current per diem rate. The top PSD scores from the current applicant pool will be invited to participate in the next scenario-based exam process, the county said. So more to follow on that because I did some work at JBLM. And, but first, on the 21st, I had the meeting with T-Hopes. They're still figuring out the way ahead. I have a meeting with the Coalition Leader coming up here on the 28th of May. I had, on the 23rd of February, a Black History Month speech where I was the keynote speaker at Madigan Army Community Hospital. Now, I had to arrive on the 22nd of February to do a rehearsal because you know how we are in the military, you can't rehearse too much. So I was at the hospital, and I was looking around at all these medics. And a thought came to mind when I came back home. So that morning, my job is to create partnership, to provide solutions. So I said, why can't we create a partnership with Madigan Army Community Hospital for these 4,000 medics at any time who are stationed at JBLM to come on over to the EMS? So what about a medic-to-paramedic program? We had this in the military. It's a troop-to-teachers program. So accelerated programs to help soldiers become teachers. So if that can work for troops, teachers, why can't it work for medics-to-paramedics? So I had the discussion with the, their executive director, Ben Miller, and explained to him that I'm going to speak to the top medics on base, and it's very rare to meet them, Command Sergeant Major Cologne and a Colonel Hope was her name. I said, do you want me to approach them to let them know, what about a partnership between us, Department of Health, and SPSCC, whatever we need to do to just bring these medics on board? He was on, he was on board. He said, proceed. And after my speech, I approached Sergeant Major Cologne and the Colonel, and they were all on board. They basically were like, Councilmember Jefferson, where have you been? I can really use this program. This is occurring in Fort Sam Houston, where the school is. And he said, I can have these medics work in my ER, and it's just a win-win all around. With that, I was just too excited. And I reported back to Ben Todd Miller. So after we spoke, we still have to meet, but I just see potential for us to create such a program. I also did research. There's, there's a medic-to-paramedic program that's working in Michigan. So I sent that information to Ben Todd Miller, and I just think that this is a great fix and a way to, to grow our own and to always have EMTs in the pipeline. With that, my report is complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jefferson. Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be really brief. I was unable to attend the Regional Housing Council last week, but thankfully, Councilmember Kathy attended on my behalf, so I will defer to Councilmember Kathy for that report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
I do not have any report. So I'm threatened.
Thank you. Councilmember Kathy.
Thanks for the introduction, Michael. That was good. I, let's see, I did attend that meeting, and I was backstopped by Brad, Brad Medrude. And I think we carried on fairly well. I'll comment on a couple of things. One of them is that we have affordable housing and homeless service. And we have two different groups of folks in that that are from the community or from life experience people and so forth that are on these committees that make recommendations to us and whatever. And so there, there were new people recommended for both of those. I guess we call them committees, committees, and they were, we voted on, we, we heard something about them, about each person, and then we voted. And so we added some of those, they're all new people. It wasn't a reelection. It was, they were, they were new people, and that always helps, new blood, new perspective. So that, that was a positive thing. I did forget to announce that our CDBG grant was open for people to apply for that. Brad had even sent me a note, and I still forgot to, forgot to do that. And then a good portion of the time, or a larger portion of the time, was taken up in, in the discussion of policy, policy discussion. And it sparked a lot of comment and a lot of, yes, it's something we should do, and then a lot of different directions people were coming from, or words they were using, or how would that impact this or that? And so I think what we've done is we've, we've opened a door to a discussion of what else can and what else should the Regional Housing Council be about and also be presenting and pushing and, and making known in the community? And there was just a whole breathless, a whole lot of things, plethora of things. And Michael's name was mentioned as one of the ones who opened this door and who, who wants to have this further discussion of, of who we are as, as a policy group. And, and they said, you know, it could lead to a broader impact and more consistency in what we do. So, Michael, I just want you to know, when you come back, you're walking into this big room that we've opened of, of discussion. And I, I appreciate the work that you do there. You have, you are highly respected in that, in that community, and that, especially on that committee. So Brad and I did the best we could do. And the other thing I wanted to, to mention is that I want to start now by encouraging students in Tumwater schools to participate in the Earth Day celebration. And because the winning school who has the most students come and in, for Tumwater, I worked down at Historical Park on April the 20th, will get a $1,000 scholarship into their school that's, the money's given by the Lions Club. And this year, they're doing a second prize of $500. So it's, it's an encouraging thing. It's, the students that I've talked to about it off and on over the years, they like to get out on celebration of Earth Day and do something in the earth and get their hands dirty. So I wanted to mention that for, for our, for our high schools to just show up for that on Saturday, the 20th of April, at about 10 o'clock. And I also want to remind everyone that don't forget to turn your clocks back this weekend.
Ahead.
Ahead, I mean, well, yeah, the reason I'm probably mixed up still is I have failed to do that twice while I was, while I was pastoring churches, and I was in charge of the Sunday service. And I had to be called by a staff member and say, where are you? Well, I'm about ready. I got all my stuff here. Well, we've already been here for 15 minutes. So I, I'm very consciously well into my non-pastoral days of changing my clocks. So just a reminder to people to change and hope your pastor turns up on time at church. Thanks, Mayor. That's, that's, well, I, I will be having a meeting tomorrow of the Solid Waste Advisory Council, and this is going to be an important meeting. And one of the things I want to say that we're going to discuss, and I want to say it now to remind people, and I'll probably say it again when I give my report next time, is one of the big problems, one of the things we're going to be talking about is recycling. In recycling is people are putting their recyclables, their plastic and recyclable materials in plastic bags and putting them in their recycle bin. Or they're putting them in paper bags and putting them in their recycle bin. We need to get in our mind, no bags in the recycle. And so just dump your recycled plastic into your bin. Please don't put anything in there. So that's, that's one thing that we'll, we'll definitely be talking about. And I thought I'd talk about it now and maybe again next time. So that's my report, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Kathy. Councilmember Von Hulds.
I know, I have to go after, yeah. Um, I am finally back on my feet and upright after a short illness that I caught. I'm pretty sure at Madonna, so I'm calling it the Madonna box. But thank you for every, all the hard work that happened on the 24th. I'm really sorry that I missed that meeting, but I feel like I got caught up between Lisa and the mayor and lots of good stuff coming up. I'm, I haven't had any meetings, but I'm super excited that this year I'll be able to take my granddaughter to the Easter egg dash. So if there are kids that are interested in egg hunts, the parents should take them to this. And so that's what I'm really excited about.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. So LOTS, which stands for Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, Thurston County, Clean Water Alliance, met February 22nd. It was our first meeting of the year. And so the update for that is, I think, is similar to other reports, is a new membership. So for Olympia, we have representation by Danny Madrone. Lacey continues to be Carolyn Cox, myself for Tumwater, and then Ty Mensur for Thurston County. We had board elections. Ty Mensur is now the president of the Board of Directors, and I currently serve as the vice president of the Board of Directors. So that was pretty cool. The other meeting I want to highlight is Thurston County Opiate Response Task Force, which I would hope that they would shorten that one day. The two, I am on the Prevention Subcommittee, and with that, we talked about 2024 SMART goals. And SMART stands for Specific Measurable Achievable Realistic Time Bound. And there's two goals that reminded me of Councilmember Jefferson and Tumwater Hopes, and the school board, and potential nonprofits like Together, which I know someone is on that board, who's on this dais, Kelly Von Hulds. So one of the goals is expand resources to local communities with an emphasis on peer education and youth-led substance use prevention work. And so I think there's an opportunity, if we do have a meeting with our school board, like what could that look like in that conversation, right? What are, what are they seeing? What are nonprofits seeing? What is Tumwater Hopes? And then how does it tie in with funding from the Opiate Response Task Force? The other goal, which is P6, is expand availability of fact-based drug education and information about harm reduction approaches to substance use for youth. I think that also plays in to nonprofits doing that work in our school district, the school district on what our hopes, and our relationship and funding with this group. So those are the two things I wanted to highlight, that that is the direction a lot of this work is going towards, is the whole spectrum of age and use, and also specifically calling out youth. And so I think there's an opportunity to collaborate as we move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers Fortho.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. On February 23rd, no, 23rd, we attended, no, it's March 1st. I attended the Thurston Regional Planning Council, and the reason I look at the mayors because we sit next to each other at this meeting.
Except I represent a different organization, yes.
So my report, we talked about, we've already had the presentation for the Growth Management Act for the housing need allocations. And so we, as a council, we received that report. And so TRPC was tasked with approving the, the allocation, the need allocation. And so, so we had a robust discussion about that. And, and then we did approve it. And so the next step is that our, the staff will be scoping the next phase of the project, which is a land capacity analysis. And the result of the land capacity analysis may require revisions to the preferred housing need allocation. So it's kind of still a fluid thing. They're not hard and fast numbers. Some people were concerned, sent in some of their comments that they, that they're, that the allocation seemed, they were concerned with the allocation numbers. And so it's still a work in progress. So we were able to weighlay some of their, their concerns. Then we also had the Thurston County Economic Journey, the current conditions and exciting opportunities. We had a presentation from Michael Cade with Thurston EDC and Jean Angel, who's also with the Thurston EDC. It was quite an inspiring little presentation that Jean did. And so we were looking at each other and thinking that perhaps we will bring their show to work sessions sometime and, and do a presentation. So it was really, it was very insightful, and they had a lot of good information. And that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. All right, that concludes the council reports, and I do not believe we have any other business. So with that, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone, and thank you for attending.